I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. We'd like to call the meeting of the Shreveport City Council to order. If you have your cell phones, we would ask that you put them on silence, or if in fact you would turn them off. At this particular time, we're going to ask Councilwoman Taylor to lead us in prayer. We're going to ask Councilman Nicholson to lead us in the pledge.
Goodbye, Your Heavens. Obrations and merciful Father, we thank You for this day. Thank You for the opportunity to administer the business of the city of Shreveport. We ask right now that You would give us guidance and wisdom to execute it act on behalf of Your citizens. These and other blessings we ask in Your Son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the road police?
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Bowman. And Councilwoman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilwoman Boosch. Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Boosch.
I'm here. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and city council meeting Monday, November 7, 2022?
So moved.
By Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments?
Okay.
If not, we're ready to vote. And that passes. Thank you. Does any council member have any awards recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? Seeing there's none. Ms. Mayor, do you have any awards recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do not, Ms. Chair. I do have some comments. I just want to let everybody know government plaza will be closed next Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday, and we have a modified trash schedule next week. You can go to www.shreveportla.gov to look up trash collection for next week. That's all the two comments I have, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Do you have any other communications relative to city business?
I do not, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Does any member have any questions concerning property standards for Mr. Green?
Not for Mr. Green, but I do have a question because I see that there's people that might be here for dedication for Councilman Bowman. Do you know if he's going to come, or should we?
I have no idea. Any questions for Mr. Green? Well, Mr. Green, thank you. Ms. Clark, do you have a master plan report today? On your way up, will you cover that decal that you got?
With pride, I walk up and address this council, Mr. Chair. I'd forgotten that that was a meeting today. I would not have shown my true colors today, but I...
I showed my true colors, Lord, I wanted to show my true colors.
Show your colors, show your colors, Ms. Clark.
But we are excited about, I don't have much to say. We are excited about moving forward in 2023. Let me very hopeful that we will get an update to the master plan. A lot of things have changed. We've struggled with, as we stated throughout the year, the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic, and a lot of closures and so forth. And the whole, the whole atmosphere in Shreveport has, has transcended into another atmosphere, and we need some more recommendations so that we go into 2030, meeting these obligations and making the city the city that we all want it to be. So we're looking forward to working with you and going forward with these changes and making the necessary changes with the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. This time, Councilman Bowman has arrived. I think he has some recognitions today. Mr. Bowman, the mic is yours.
I did. Thank you, Chairman. First, the family of... My, I'm trying to call them by my, my, I want to say my friend. I want to say my, my dad's friend, my mom's friend. The family of Mr. Schuford. Would you, could you please stand or come to the front, please? Stand right in front of the microphone, it'd be great. First, I wanted to say that Mr. Schuford was a good, good friend of my family's, and we bought insurance, I say we, we had insurance with Mr. Schuford for a long, long time, and it wasn't just a regular person to just come by and take the payment and go on. Mr. Schuford wanted to know all your business, and he would go tell you about his business. And he was concerned, he was one somebody I can say that was really concerned about his, his clients at that time. And we remained to be in contact with each other. All the time that he was the Neighborhood Association President, he called and still called after when he was not and still fussed at me and told me what he wanted done, what didn't happen, you know? So we still had a good relationship. And I just, I appreciate him, and I appreciate that, that's what a neighborhood association president should be about, and I think that Mr. Schuford was the epitome of that. I had, if the clerk will, can you read it?
Sure.
A resolution dedicating the 100 block of Funderon Circle in honor of Lawson J. Schuford Jr. and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Whereas Lawson J. Schuford Jr., the son of the late Geneva R. Lee, and Lawson J. Schuford Sr., was born on November 17, 1932, in Wascom, Texas. Whereas Lawson attended and received his education from the primary and secondary schools of Cattle Parish from which he graduated. Whereas Lawson graduated from the United States Air Force Senior NCO Academy and received his Bachelor of Science degree. Lawson completed 33 years in the United States Air Force, having served two tours of duty in the Vietnam War. Lawson retired in December 1982 with the rank of Senior Chief Master Sergeant. Whereas Lawson worked for New York Life Insurance Company as a life insurance underwriter for 37 years until he retired. Lawson was an appointed official for the Cattle Metropolitan Planning Commission and served as past chairman. Whereas in his leisure time, Lawson served with the Knights of Columbus, Board of Directors for the Hap House, Board of Directors for Northwest Louisiana Council of Governments, Juvenile Resource Facility Committee Member, Louisiana High School Athletic Association, and Young Men Christian Association. He also was a supporter of the Northwest Louisiana Sickle Cell Softball Tournament. Whereas Lawson had a passion for his community, he was emeritus president of the Lakeside Acres Neighborhood Association, served on the Board of Directors for the Allendale-Lebitter Heights and Lakeside Acres Partnership. And whereas Lawson made sure the neighbors were informed on all city ordinances and policies. He secured yearly grants from the City of Shreveport Department of Community Development, which included three security cameras in the neighborhood, three "Welcome to Lakeside Acres Neighborhood Subdivision" signs, along with neighborhood participation annually and National Night Out. Whereas on Friday, March 11, 2021, Lawson J. Schuford Jr. departed this life and with all of his accomplishments, his greatest gift was his wife, the former Lillian A. Schuford, to whom he was married for 59 years, and his daughter, Tangela Schuford Wilson. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due regular and legal session convening that the mayor on behalf of the city is authorized to dedicate the 100 block of Funderon Circle in honor of Lawson J. Schuford Jr. Be it further resolved that in accordance with Resolution Number 156 of 2019, the dedication marker should be approximately nine inches tall and 42 inches wide and should be placed on an existing standard or street sign if the placement is authorized by traffic engineering. Be it further resolved that all resolutions or parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, I would like to thank everybody. And my dad, he really loved Shreveport. He came back in, what, 19, I want to say, when he left the military? So it had to be around, I graduated, let's see, I have to think when I graduated, 1979. And from 1979 up until he died, actually, he was very active in his community. He loved Shreveport. And if you ever came in contact with him, you know he loved Shreveport. So thank you very much. And on behalf of our family, my grand, his grandson, he's a teacher and coach, and he couldn't be here today because they got football, it's number one, you know, in Texas. So he had to attend that. But thank you all very much, and I appreciate it. And he had a birthday yesterday. He would have been 90. So I'm sure today he's looking down on us saying, job well done. Thank y'all.
Stand right there for a second, please. The mayor will come down with you.
Well, just as an adopted member of the family, he was considered my godfather since I was 15. And he's the one who got me into sports and different things like that. So this has been my sister, my family for many, many years. And we are very thankful to Mr. Bowman and to this council for doing this for him. He would be over the moon with excitement about it. So thank you.
And also, I would like to recognize his neighbors. We have a lot of his neighbors here that came. So could y'all stand, please? And thank you all so much for coming.
Thank you. Is there a, did everyone receive their budget actual financial report today? Assuming you did.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be add today?
Yes, there is a request that ordinance 215 be added to the agenda. This is an ordinance amending the 2022 general fund budget.
Thank you. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor or against this legislation to be added to the agenda? Seeing there's none to add ordinance number 215.
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
Good evening. Running late myself, John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Shreveport 71119. I'm to say with yea or nay, and it is yea, to add it to the agenda. We didn't get the agenda in time, so we'd like for you all to look into that because it wasn't published within 24 hours as the, as the revised statute requests or requires. Thank you.
Is there any, anyone else to speak or against this being added to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to add this legislation to the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Boosch. Are there any questions or comments at this particular?
Mr. Chairman, can I have a brief explanation of what this legislation is?
Mr. Chair, did you have a person to come?
We have Chief Smith here.
Who?
Chief Martin Smith.
Chief Smith? Chief, would you give us a...
Oh, this thing?
Oh, okay. Chief, would you tell us why this, give us some explanation about this?
Yes, it's very important to us. As you recall, at the last council meeting, that you asked that I give a brief explanation of the terrible incident that took place in your district, as a matter of fact, over in Queensborough, where a lady held herself hostage and shot at least nine times at police officers and others on the scene. And those rounds were deflected by an armored vehicle, which we do not have. We've always had to borrow Bossier City's or the Cattle Parish Sheriff's Department. Well, you know, throughout our budget hearing, trying to be conservative with our funds, we didn't find a way to make this happen. So thanks to the city administration, as we began to close out our budget year, we saw that that was some residual money left from personnel positions that we were not able to fill that would fund this project. And so what we're asking today is that that money be moved to a position where we can purchase a Linco Bearcat, which not only does it save police lives, it saves civilian lives. That day, which some of you witnessed, when the lady who obviously was having some, some mental issues began to fire at the police officers, and the bullets began to deflect off of these personnel vehicles. One, as a matter of fact, a government one was disabled. Officers would have returned fire, but because of that, they did not return fire. All of my officers were safe. This lady was safe. We was able to neutralize the situation and get her the help that she need. There are 28 other cities in Louisiana, talking about cities, that have these. Most of them are smaller than the city of Shreveport. Over the course of the last six years that Bossier City has had theirs, for the most part, all the miners, all the use on it has been put in, in the city of Shreveport by us. So if at all possible, we would like to, while the funding exists from our prior budget, move it to where we can, can purchase our own.
What is the cost of the equipment, Chief?
It's around five, five and a half million dollars. Excuse me, $500,000 to $550,000. Excuse me, I apologize. My bad. I apologize.
You're about to lose me there, Chief.
No, sorry. And all of the, the other agencies are buying them off of the government contracts. And I do have a list here with you to show you the number of cities in the state of Louisiana. I didn't print it all out for you. They had 41 pages with about 30 agencies on each page across the United States that has these, that have purchased them from this company. And 28 cities here in the state of Louisiana that owns them. And that's something that lasts, you know, 25, 30 years or better. It's kind of like a building, Harley-Davidson motorcycle, you just keep on going with it. They built out a half-inch armor plated steel. It's guaranteed to stop up to a 50 caliber round, both front and back. So it stands to reason that we should have one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Councilman Nicholson, being out there on that scene that day, I am grateful that no lives were taken for the rounds that were fired. The vehicle that we were borrowing that day saved those officers' lives. So I think that it is imperative that the city of Shreveport, that they have their own. And so since Chief Smith has the available funds to do that, I just ask for you all to support putting this on the agenda so we could vote for that. And so this not, that won't be the last scene, unfortunately, that they face. We just want to make sure that they're prepared and ready when they have to go out and they don't have to wait on a tank to come in.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think this may be, so this will be introduced today, and then we'll vote on it two weeks down. Is that correct? I'm 100% for it. I mean, I, I think you need it. I think we talked about it in budget. So I'm for it. I would encourage everybody to vote for it as well. So yeah, I'm for adding it, and let's, let's vote it in next, next meeting and get you what you need. Thank you, Chief.
All right. Anyone else? In order for this to be added, it must be a unanimous vote. Are there any other questions or any other comments? If not, seeing none, is there a motion to add this to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Nicholson and Boosch. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Counsel, we cannot hear you.
Ms. Whitehawke, y'all have somebody to turn the mics up? And that passes? Today, we will hear public comments on non-agenda items and agenda items at this time. Do we have any requests to speak? Do we have any questions? Seeing we have no requests to speak? We have no executive appointments to be considered today? Are there no items on the consent agenda legislation to be introduced? Yes? So at this particular time, Madam Clerk, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Yes. Okay, there, I think we did skip one thing on the agenda, the public hearing for ordinance number 193, but there is a request that that be postponed until December 13.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Boosch. That this item be postponed? Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I could. I met this week with the developers of this, this tract of land, myself and the parish and city engineer, and there's still a few unanswered questions. They'll be adding 240 homes to an existing subdivision that's in the city limits now and need it to be annexed, but we have a traffic study that says there needs to be a red light. There's another traffic study that says there needs to be some turn lanes. And then there's also some drainage issues downstream with the parish that are concerning. So our city engineers department and public works are working with the parish to kind of come up with something. So that's why we're asking to postpone this until we can get all these questions answered. So.
All right, that item has been postponed. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Do we need to vote?
We didn't vote?
Uh-uh.
I thought we voted. Let's vote. And that passes. Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
There is one other thing before we get to the regular agenda. We do need to add a budget public hearing to the meeting today.
Okay. Is there a motion to add the budget amendment to the agenda today?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor. Seconded by Councilman Bowman.
Okay.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman.
This is, this is a motion to add a hearing?
Add the public hearing of the budget. Thank you, yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? Not this one?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, do we need to solicit a public comment regarding adding this item to the agenda?
Do we need to add any public comments? Are there any public comments as to whether or not we add the budget agenda to the legislation today? Yes. Come to the mic.
With regards to, do I need to say who I am again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, John Glover, 19, no, sorry. John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, apartment 1217118, Shreveport. Before we can say yea or nay to an amendment that is be added to the budget, we need to know what we're saying yea or nay to. We have no explanation. So can someone help us out? Thank you.
Ms. Glover, right now what we're saying is that we need to have, we need to add the hearing to the agenda. But before we can do that, we have to agree on whether or not to... We can't have the hearing until we can add it to the agenda, and we're opening a public comment on whether or not to add it to the agenda, and then we can have the hearing.
Okay, so what we're doing is just saying...
Which will also have public comment.
Okay, which will also stand as public comment. So this is kind of, we should watch it kind of work, huh?
Weevly wobbly, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we are. I will say yea to adding it to the agenda because I'd like to know what it is. Thank you.
Questions or comments of adding this to the agenda?
Sir? What did you say? I, I think we already voted on it. Mr. Chairman, will we now have the budget hearing?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We have presented the budget to council as it stands now, and we're prepared to answer any questions that the council may have regarding the budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience about the budget at this particular time? Where are we now, Madam Clerk?
Waiting to see if there are public comments?
Are there any que...
Excuse me, but there are some members up here. Mr. Boosch, we had no trouble hearing him, but, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. But if, could you move your speaker microphone closer? We absolutely cannot hear what you're speaking.
Next time, come to the microphone when you speak to.
I'd be glad to, but I'm sure people can hear me better right now than they can hear anyone over here.
But you have to come to the microphone. I understand what you're saying, but you have to come to the microphone.
My name is Patricia Gilli. I live at 714 Coach Like Road. And my only reason for appearing at the microphone here is to ask that the, the audio system either be modified in some way or if the chairman would please move his microphone closer because we can hear some of the individuals. Ms. Joseph, we could understand, but even though it's a working meeting, we're supposed to be able to hear what you're doing, what you're saying. So if you could please either move your chair closer or move, move the mic closer, we'd be most grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time. Are there any other comments on the budget?
John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, apartment 121, Shreveport 71118. So what is the amendment that you're adding to the budget?
The amendment that we're adding involves the armored personnel vehicle, ordinance number 215. We have some other amendments that we would be discussing as we move down the agenda, but the one that we just talked about is ordinance 215, and that's amending the 2022 general fund budget. These are dollars that's already appropriated, and we're requesting that they be transferred from personal services to...
Chief, where you coming?
That will be a second. Let me pull it up real quick. My computer's working slow. The money's been transferred... The money's been transferred from personal services to improvements and equipment.
And how much is that dollar amount?
$550,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we close the hearing now? Do we close the hearing?
We do.
At this particular time, we'd like, is there a motion that this public hearing be closed? Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilwoman Bowman, and it's closed? All right. Now can we move to regular legislative, agenda legislation?
We can.
All right, I got my mic fixed. At this time, we will, Madam Clerk, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Okay, resolution 138, authorizing the submission of an amendment to the City of Shreveport's 2021 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilwoman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with five.
Resolution 140, dedicating the 100 block of Fundren Circle in honor of Lawson J. Schuford, Jr.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with five, one out of ten, one out.
Resolution 141, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in the vicinity of District D and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the City of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution. And this resolution has to be postponed.
Motion by Councilman Butcher.
Second.
Second.
Second, motion by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Nicholson, that this item be postponed. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Wait, don't Butcher to move. Motion carries with five to postpone.
Okay, resolution 142, authorizing the execution of a retainer agreement with attorney Joey Greenwald relative to certain matters concerning notices of water and sewage disconnection. And this one also needs to be postponed until December 13th.
So moved to postpone.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Butcher, that this item be postponed. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with five to postpone. Councilwoman Taylor. Motion passes with five.
Resolution 143, authorizing the execution of a retainer agreement with Richard M. John, APLC. And this one should also be postponed until December 13th.
So moved to postpone.
Moved by Councilman Bowman to postpone, second by.
Second.
Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with five to postpone.
Resolution 144, authorizing the execution of cooperative endeavor agreement with Allendale Lakeside LeBeter Heights Partnership. And this one should also be postponed until December 13th.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Butcher.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowman, that this item be postponed. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with five to postpone.
Resolution 145, authorizing the mayor to accept monetary donation of $85,276.80 from the Cattle Parish Commission to the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Fire Department for the City of Shreveport. And this resolution should also be postponed.
So moved to postpone.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Butcher, that this item be postponed. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with five to postpone.
Resolution 146, declaring that the City of Shreveport is committed to using its funding located in Capital Program B, Project B12004, in order to cover any construction amount over the state of Louisiana's allocated amount for construction.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by.
Second.
Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions or comments? Not this item. Let's vote.
Motion passes with five.
Resolution 147, dedicating the 1400 block of Peabody Street in honor of Charlie Codwell, Jr.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
I would say one thing, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We really tried to get that street renamed, but we ran into some issues legally that we could not rename Peabody. It was named after somebody illegally. We can't take that name away to put another name, even though the majority of the property was owned by the city and some heirs. We still couldn't get it done. So I'm thankful that Chairman, that Mr. Bowman, Councilman Bowman, put this on here because Charlie does deserve the recognition of all the years he served. So this is not exactly what we wanted, but at least it's something, so.
And it wasn't my thought, if you finish. I thought that if, maybe if we did this first, because I thought Peabody was named after somebody who, I think, one of those shops that were there at one time. So maybe if it's another street.
I was thinking Hope, so looking at Hope, maybe, so.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Motion passes with six and one out.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to December 13th?
Resolution 148, approving the issuance of a demolition permit for the structure located at 1504 Peabody Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71103. Resolution 149, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to an option to ground lease between the City of Shreveport and Shreveport Millennium Housing LLC and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Resolution 150, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Shreveport and Carr, Riggs, and Ingram LLC for the purpose of an external audit of the city for fiscal year January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Resolution 151, authorizing the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with the Department of Environmental Quality of the state of Louisiana to reduce the number of waste tires currently existing in the collection center that exceed the regulatory limit.
Is there a motion to introduce these resolutions?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions or comments? These items have been introduced. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to December 13, 2022?
Ordinance 197, amending ordinance number 146 of 2022, which amended the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2022 Capital Projects Fund Budget. Ordinance 198, amending the 2022 Capital Projects Fund Budget. Ordinance 199, amending the 2022 Capital Projects Fund Budget. Ordinance 200, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 201, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 202, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2022 Solid Waste Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 203, amending the 2022 budget funding contractual services provided to Sportran by Metro Management Associates Incorporated. Ordinance 204, amending the 2022 budget for the MPC Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 205, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 206, amending the 2022 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 207, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 208, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 209, amending the 2022 Grants Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 210, amending the 2022 Riverfront Development Fund Budget. Ordinance 211, amending the 2022 Streets Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 212, amending the 2022 Water and Sewerage Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 213, to amend Article 7, Division 4, Section 90-332 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to overtime parking. Ordinance 214, zoning case number 22-197C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Stoner Avenue, approximately 316 feet west of Highland Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R3 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District to C2 Quarter Commercial Zoning District. An ordinance 215, an ordinance to amend the 2022 General Fund Budget.
Is there a motion to introduce these ordinance?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman. Second by. Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
You'll have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Yes, ordinance 109, to amend various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of updating and revising the regulations for political signs. And this has already been postponed until December 13th.
All right.
Ordinance 157, to amend various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of adding special exception use approval standards for short-term rental properties. And this ordinance does have an amendment that replaces the entire ordinance with exhibits. It removes the distance requirements language from 23.5B-4B to 23.5B-3B.
Are we voting on this today?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Clark, may I be.
Let us put it on, we gotta get it on the floor first.
I move for adoption of the amendment.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Butcher. Are there any questions or comments? Not discussion, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this amendment makes clear that the distance requirements apply to both B1 and B2 short-term rentals. When I read the legislation as presented, I was concerned that there was some ambiguity on that point. And so that's the only change this amendment affects. But Mr. Clark may be able to answer any additional questions that members have.
Go ahead.
I just want, so that it changed that distance from.
Mr. Clark, would you come up just in case?
I honestly just wanted to see your jersey again, but I just need to know that.
And I brought Adam Bailey up because he'd worked very closely with Councilor Nicholson on that change.
I just want to make sure that the distance, that's it, the exact distance that it changed from and to.
I think it was just a misunderstanding and as Councilman Nicholson referred to ambiguities in how it was written, so we corrected and put it in the appropriate place. And I think everything is in order at this point.
What is the distance?
It's in the 500 feet of the number of short-term rentals that you can have. I will share with you, we had a hearing on yesterday, and we will be bringing some additional amendments to the short-term rental ordinance. It's a devolving process because certain neighborhoods have certain concerns. And we're finding those concerns that every time we go into a neighborhood where there's high density and so forth. So we will be looking at how we address short-term rentals in those particular neighborhoods.
I have a concern with the neighborhoods that have covenants.
And the attorneys will tell you that we don't get into the covenants. If they have a covenant, they should be advising their property owners, property owner to property owner, that you could not, you cannot do this. We don't have the authority to advise them that you can't have a short-term rental. They are complying with the ordinance of the City of Shreveport.
So that's short, so if someone goes into a neighborhood to have a short-term rental in an area where there is a covenant, who notifies the residents?
The, as you well know, the covenants are legal, civil, legal agreements between property owners. When you move into a particular neighborhood, you sign a covenant sharing that you will abide. By those agreements between you and the other property owners in the neighborhood, it is responsibility of that neighborhood to advise that property owner that you cannot have a short-term rental in this neighborhood, not us.
And if the neighborhood doesn't know? I'm just asking.
No, and, you know, it's, I think that if you have a neighborhood covenant, that you know what, you should know what you signed before you moved into a neighborhood. In all the cases that we've had that neighborhood had covenants, they were well aware that the covenants existed. Part of the problem is they want us to enforce the covenants, which we cannot do. It is their responsibility to enforce their covenants.
I can understand about you all not enforcing the covenant. I'm just trying to make sure that with this short-term rental, that what is presented by the city is not applicable for that neighborhood that has covenants.
And I guess I'm not sharing clearly enough is that a covenant has nothing to do with this ordinance. If there's a covenant in existence, we will still receive the application if it meets the ordinance of the City of Shreveport. We still will grant the approval for the short-term rental. In the event that the covenant prohibits that, it is the responsibility of that neighborhood to share with that property owner that they cannot have this use within that neighborhood.
I think that just in my neighborhood alone, there's several houses in there. But I can just about guarantee you with social media now, if that, if there's an Airbnb or vacation rental that goes in there, they're gonna know it.
Absolutely. And we are aware of all of the Airbnbs in the City of Shreveport. And, but it's their responsibility, as you well know, Councilman Butcher, to notify those property owners.
Is there any database that we have just to kind of help what Councilwoman Taylor's saying? Is there any database or map that a neighborhood could look at to see?
That they have covenants in these particular.
Not for covenants, but to identify where the.
Plotted on there if you live in a neighborhood and you see it, or the POA, or the HOA, or whatever, can see where these are, and then they can address it.
We will, we will post all of the short-term rentals on our website. And the neighborhood can go from that point, if they have covenants, and advise those property owners that they're in violation. Plus, we will notify the neighborhoods. In a lot of instances, that application, if it comes before us, is before us. And like I said, Councilwoman Taylor, we're still looking at short-term rentals. They're kind of new to us, and we're still evaluating the effectiveness of our ordinance. But I think at this point, with the, with the information and suggestions that have been provided by council persons, I think we have a pretty good ordinance in place.
Are there any other questions on, Mr. Clark? If not.
And I will remain invisible the rest of the meeting with my T-shirt on.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Say your motion.
Yes, the motion on the floor is to adopt the amendment.
Motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Bowman, right? Butcher, are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with five and one against.
Is there a motion on the ordinance that is amended?
So moved with amended.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with five and one against.
Thank you.
Ordinance 178, amending the. Ordinance one seventy-eight amending the twenty twenty-two Capital Improvements Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one seventy-nine amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Capital Projects Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Capital Projects Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty-one amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Capital Projects Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Follow. Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty-two amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two General Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
It's not up.
Yes.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty-three amending the twenty twenty-two Golf Enterprise Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty-four amending the twenty twenty-two General Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty-five amending the twenty twenty-two General Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, this concerns the Marshals' budget. Have we resolved any outstanding issues concerning that?
This is not the one on the Marshals' pay. This is on some transfer funds for improvement in equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty-six amending the twenty twenty-two General Fund Budget.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty-seven amending the twenty twenty-two General Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one eighty-eight amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion. Passes with. Six.
Ordinance one eighty-nine amending ordinance number seventy of twenty twenty-two, which amends the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Retained Risk Fund Budget.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six.
Ordinance one thirty-five A to repeal ordinance one thirty-five of twenty twenty-two into re-adopting ordinance changing the name of Red Fox Circle in the Moore Girl Circle subdivision in Section twenty-five, T-seventeen N-dash-R-fifteen W to God's Country, and there's a request that this be postponed until February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
To February fourteenth?
Yes.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by the Chair. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion to postpone passes with six.
Ordinance one ninety-two closing and abandoning a portion of Borssois Street and an alley dedication in the Borssois Annex subdivision in Section thirty-five, T-eighteen N-dash-R-fifteen W. This one needs to be postponed until December thirteenth.
Some move.
Motion by Councilman Bowman to postpone, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? Then let's vote.
Motion to postpone passes with six.
Ordinance one ninety-three annexation tag number twenty-two dash oh one, an ordinance to annex property in Section seven, T-sixteen N-dash-R-thirteen W, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, into the city limits of the City of Shreveport, and this, this needs to be postponed until December thirteenth.
Move to postpone.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Bowman to postpone. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, that's the area we were talking about last week.
Yeah, that's, that's right there, Walsley Road and Forman Lucas, the extension of the Lucian Field Estates.
Any other questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion to postpone passes with six.
Ordinance one ninety-four to amend Section sixty-six dash one forty-one of Chapter sixty-six, personnel, Article three, health benefits for the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the healthcare costs for full-time active employees and retirees. This also needs to be postponed until December thirteenth.
Motion to postpone.
Motion by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion to postpone passes with six.
Ordinance one ninety-five to amend various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, Unified Development Code for the purpose of creating a residential rental property registration program with all its provisions included therein, and this also needs to be postponed until December thirteenth.
Motion to postpone.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. This item be postponed? Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with six to postpone.
Ordinance number one ninety-six zoning case number twenty-two dash one seventy-five-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located north side of Greenwood Road, approximately six hundred feet west of Curtis Lane, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, I-one light industrial zoning district to C-three general commercial zoning district, and this should be postponed until December thirteenth.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by.
Second.
Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote to postpone.
Councilwoman, I know that's right at the, I, I should just about get right at the edge, so.
Yes, I think it's supposed to be a church.
Motion passes with six.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
Yes, there's a request that the Hearing Officer for Electronic Traffic Enforcement, Christina Douglas, be removed from the table.
So move.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by the Chair. Are there any questions or comments?
Miss.
Does it move from the table to go on the table?
Once, yes, once it's moved from the table, then you can motion to approve the appointment.
All right. So at this time, we need to move it from the table? Is there a motion?
We already did that.
Yeah, I just, I just moved it from.
We moved it from.
Then you move to.
Now we're putting, right.
We got to vote it off the table, right?
We got to vote it off.
We got a motion to remove, remove from the table, second, vote.
Right, and then you can move to approval of the.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to vote. It's been second. Yeah, right.
Jackson, you want to vote?
Okay.
Motion passes with seven.
At this time, is there a motion to approve, Ms. Good.
Christina.
Christina Douglas.
Some move.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with seven. Congratulations, Ms.
Congratulations, Senator Douglas.
Thank you. At this time, there's a motion to remove the budget from the table and add it, that it can be added to agenda that it will be voted on on December fifteenth.
Thirteenth.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
December thirteenth?
Fifteenth.
It, you need to move it from the table to add it to the December thirteenth.
To the thirteenth, okay.
Motion passes with seven.
A motion to add it to the agenda.
Motion to add to the.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by the Chair, that we add this to the agenda. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, what is to be added? I'm sorry.
The budget.
The budget, yeah.
Yes.
So that's, that's all we need to do right now.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. We have no property standards. MPC, ZBA, ABO appeals today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
None.
Are there any reports on officers' boards, committees? Madam Clerk, is there a close report?
Yes. The following letters of appointments were received from the mayor's office on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and are subject for confirmation on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. That's the Cattle Bojor Port Commission, Joshua Williams, and for the Shreveport Workforce Development Board, Bruce Burnett, Teresa F. Hefner, and KCC Travis.
Madam Clerk, do you have any additional communications?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Does any council member have any additional communications?
Oh, I know Ms. Douglas wasn't in there when we, I just wanted to make sure she knew that we, we did vote, so congratulations to you.
We have a request from the city attorney to go in executive session to discuss the following. Madam Clerk, would you read it into the record what we have to discuss, and then the.
And we need, we need a motion to enter into executive session.
You'll need to recite the legislation, and then we'll have a motion.
If we have a motion, we need to recite.
We have Kathy Malonson versus the City of Shreveport, and also the City of Shreveport versus H.H. Shreveport, Hustler Hollywood, Riverboat Novelties, Wilco Novelties.
I move to an executive session.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson, second, second by Councilwoman Taylor to go in executive session at this particular time. We would ask that at this particular time, the, is that motion?
We, we move, now vote.
Let's vote. I'm sorry. Thank you, we are now in executive session. Thank you all for coming.